I believe that Springfield Renaissance School is in the house. And they're accompanied by Principal Colborne is here and Daniel Pear, Assistant Principal. And we have Ariana Bailey, Chantel Cheney, Sophia Romeo, Nazri Elie, Correct me if I'm wrong, Gonzalez, Megan Curly, and Lorian Rios. Come on down.
My name's Ariana Bailey.
All right, Ariana.
My name's Megan Curly.
Okay, Meg.
Hi, my name's Nazri Elie Gonzalez.
That's right.
My name's Sophia Romeo.
Hey, Sophia.
My name is Chantel Cheney.
Hey, Chantel.
As a grade, we worked with partners for a healthier community and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission as a part of the Live Well Springfield Initiative. The project promotes walking and biking to school as a way of making Springfield healthier. The seventh graders had two tasks. One, to collect data from DeBarry and Homer Elementary School. Two was to conduct a walk audit throughout the DeBarry and Homer neighborhoods. We did this to see how many kids walk or bike to school and their reason. The Live Well Springfield group will use this information to increase the number of children who walk or bike to school.
Good job.
In the project, we conducted surveys and got the information from Homer Street School. We found out that 53% of the children who surveyed do not walk to school. With more than 50% of the students not walking, the only question is why? The top three reasons were distance, crime, cars, and traffic. Several other reasons were chosen as well, such as weather and not having an adult to walk with. Also, the age of the child is very important.
Nice job.
Based on the survey results, we have several recommendations to increase the number of students who walk or bike to school. One way is to create a walking bus school program. A walking bus school program is a group of children who walk with one or many responsible adults. Another way is for the school to keep a list of walkers. When the walkers arrive at school, they are checked off the list. If not at school, the school should call home to make sure they are okay.
Areas around the two schools are in decent shape, but with a little bit more improvement, we hope more students feel safe to walk and bike to school. During the walk audit, we observed the sidewalks were uneven and cracked. There were not a lot of crosswalks, and the speed limit is not posted very often, and therefore the cars go too fast, making it again unsafe for students to safely cross the street. However, we really liked the artwork and places to sit near Mason Square. We found the verges to be helpful for people to stop and take a break while crossing State Street, and tactile paving for the pedestrian crosswalks make entering the streets safe for all people.
Very good.
We hope we can work together to make Springfield a safer and healthier community to live in. We'd like to invite you to our school tomorrow at 11:30 when we officially give our reports to the community organizations. Thank you.
Great job. Okay, Springfield Public Day Middle School is in the house. Eddie Guzman, Jonathan Goff, if I'm pronouncing it right, accompanied by Linda Singer, Assistant Vice Mrs. Principal, and Iman Lynn Winehammer, math teacher. So I better get my facts straight there. Come on down. Oh yeah, you got the professorial jacket on, that's right.
Hi, my name is Eddie. Hi, everyone.
How you doing, Eddie?
Springfield Public Day Middle School has helped me to improve in writing complete sentences and finding text evidence from stories. My reading skills has increased my interest in reading more books. I'm a member of Student Council. It's a way to improve your own school climate. Teachers feel like your own family keeping you safe. We went on so many field trips like hiking Mount Tom and Mount Skinnerd. We also went on college tours like UMass and Springfield College. School is a place where you can make your own opportunities to become the person who you really wanted to be. Teachers have a good time teaching because they are learning from students. Try to think of teachers as one of your family member, like an uncle or aunt. Try socializing with a class member or a friend and make connections. It works for me.
Eddie, good job. Good job, Eddie. Jonathan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
You're doing fine.
Right now, I'm sending Springfield Public Day Middle School completing a contract to transition out of the middle school into a mainstream school, most likely after the Springfield... Wait, most likely after...
I have the same problem too, Jonathan. Don't worry about it.
Most likely after the break approaching. I started in the alternative system in sixth grade due to behavior issues. I matured over the years into a proper role model student. With the help of all SPDMS staff, throughout my time being there, I have learned a lot. At SPDMS, the conduct rule is to be respectful, be responsible, be safe, and be encouraged to make good choices. I have followed those through the time I've been attending the school. My middle school year is almost done, and I am preparing for my upcoming freshman year, which I hope to be attending Central High School. I have very intimate goals that I will attain without any struggle. Like being an athlete, it has gotten me out of trouble. Playing basketball takes my mind off things and helps me focus. I work on my game every day and work towards making myself the best I can be at it. Thank you for listening and have a good night.
Nice job, Jonathan. Thank you. South End Middle School is in the house. Principal Cheryl Despirit is here, and my man Damian Gonzalez, who is here for two reasons tonight, he's also a Project 351 state award winner. Put your hands together for Damian Gonzalez.
Good evening, members of the school community. Mayor Sarno and Superintendent Lieutenant Warwick. My name is Damian Gonzalez. I'm an eighth grader student at South End Middle School. I'm here tonight to tell you about some of the good things that happened at South End ever since I last talked to you in October. To start off, at South End Middle School, we had a celebration before Christmas break. It was bingo. What students had to do to get involved was be prepared and get over the percentage of stamps from their teachers. But if students didn't have enough stamps, if students had honor roll, they were still invited to bingo. In bingo, their prizes were spectacular. For example, a few prizes were personal dress down day, supplies for class, a bike, popcorn for entire class, gift certificates for restaurants, and other prizes that would make students be competitive with each other. The most fun part about bingo was the fact that you couldn't just fill the board. You would have to mark a shape or a letter that your bingo sheet wanted to fill in. And generally, another great event that happened at South End was the abolitionist project. The abolitionist project was a three-month celebration project with Professor Collins from Westfield State University and my social studies teacher, Mrs. Ozbowski. Everybody in eighth grade had to research different abolitionists. For example, I researched John Brown to find out his views on what he wanted to do to end slavery and why he wanted to end slavery. With the abolitionists, everyone chose. We had to create a presentation including where they lived and important abolitionist moments in their lives. We created displays and maps and shared all of our projects in the gym with the sixth grade and seventh grade students. Another great event that has happened at South End Middle School now is the core values celebration week. Our core values are be respectful, be responsible, and be ready. Our week to be invited to celebrations did stand for being respectful, responsible, and being ready. Another way is getting a VIP pass by being at school every day and all time. The core values celebration is to make your own ice cream sundae event on February 17th. And if you would like to come, I could get a VIP pass.
Glad my man, Damian.
One last event I'm sharing with you is High School Choice. It's starting for eighth grade. And what I want to share with you about High School Choice is that I would love to go to Putnam, but I am nervous of the lottery. Even though I have a brother who goes there and I have enough points, there's still a chance I won't get in. I'm crossing my fingers and I'm hoping, just like many of my classmates. This is why it's happening at South End Middle School. Thank you for allowing me to tell you what's going on at our school and thank you for your time.
Nice shot, Damian. Thank you. Perfect timing, attorney, and Vice Chair Peter Murphy is here for Zenetti Montessori as kids are there. And we're also joined by Kenneth Aspman, who's our representative for the schools, does a great job from SciTech and looking very GQ as usual tonight.
Always.
So, without further ado, the Z Team is here. Zenetti Montessori, accompanied by Principal Tara Clark and Ms. Snow, many a times the old South End Community Center where Zenetti used to do the rec in the old center. So, Marguerite Kozmersky, Lila Lily, I'm sorry, Lily Goodchild, Olivia Romito, and Hope Clark. Come on down.
Good evening, Superintendent Warwick, Mayor Sarno, and School Committee. My name is Maggie Kozmersky, and I'm a sixth grader at Zenetti School. My friends and I are here tonight to talk about some of the many extracurricular activities that Zenetti offers. Tonight, I'll be talking to you about the JV Inventors Club. The JV Inventors Club is basically the way it sounds. We are learning to be inventors. We take an invention and modify it, but it's not that easy. There are lots of steps that you have to go through to invent something. And sometimes you don't even have to come up with your own idea to invent something. All you have to do is modify it to be more efficient. The JV Inventors also helps me in another way. It helps me in learning more about my interests. I want to be a fashion designer when I grow up, so designing shoe soles this year has helped me understand more about what I have to do to accomplish my goal. In just one class, I learned about the steps you have to go through to design a shoe sole. First, we pick a sport and research it, what the athlete has to do, and start thinking about how we can make it easier for the athlete to do that. Then we start designing. Usually, this takes a couple of classes, but it's worth it because the next step is to make the mold. After we design the shoe, we start making a clay mold, which we carve based on our design. Once that dries, we use this rubbery substance and pour it inside of the clay and let that dry. The rubbery mold is what we will test with when we put the prototype in a crock and try it out. After we finish the shoe soles, we start to work on another invention. I can't wait to find out what that is.
Nice job. Hey, Hope, you're the chef winner too, right? Oh, no? She didn't win the chef thing?
That's Hope.
Oh, where's Hope? Back there, back there. Okay, okay. All right. Looks like twins. There's a chef, that's right. Sorry, Tara. Looked like twins.
Hi, my name is Lily Goodchild, and I'm in the sixth grade. I'll be talking to you about our school's smoothie club. It is a group of students who work together to provide a healthy snack for every student and staff member in the school. Most of the supplies are provided or donated. The blenders and tools are supplied by the Fuel Up to Play 60 and Donors Choose. The fruit and milk is supplied by Sedexo. A special thank you to Kathy Kelly. The ice is provided by Ray Rivera, AGN Commissioner, and Springfield Fire Department. We are very thankful for all of it because now we can achieve our goal of hopefully spreading healthy choices around our school and also putting a smile on the faces of others. It is just an amazing way to better our school. So once a month after the middle school's lunch, at precisely 12:30, Smoothie Club comes down to prepare to make our yummy smoothies. We set up everything we need as we wait for the milk, ice, and fruit. But we also make sure to get special ingredients for the ones who can't have the smoothies others have. But they still come out just as good. We want to make sure everyone in our school has a delicious treat and nobody is left out. We make sure to have a variety of fruit, so each month it is a new flavor. When this month's fruit and ingredients gets there, we add a cup of each ingredient into the blender and blend it all up until smooth. We already prepared the number of cups for our assigned classes. We pour it in the cups and deliver them. When we get back from delivering, we wash all the dishes and attend the rest of our classes for that day. It is great to see the reactions of the students when we hand out the smoothies. It is always the highlight of my day. It is a delicious treat that works its magic. Teamwork makes a dream work.
Nice job, Lily. Ms. Romito?
Good evening and welcome. I'm Olivia Romito, and I'm in sixth grade. And tonight, I'll be talking to you about Zenetti Student Council and Marathon Club. In Student Council, we are doing many activities to better our community in many ways. In October, we had a school-wide Halloween party and made $72 off of our haunted house. The money will go towards next year's party. In November, we did a canned food drive and collected over $1,728 worth of food that went to the food pantry. Every Wednesday, Student Council empties the recycling bins throughout the school. In Marathon Club, we have set a goal to run four marathons by the end of the school year. Each quarter, we try to run one marathon. Every Tuesday and Friday, we meet and run two to three miles each day. Every time you reach one marathon, you get a prize. Donors Choose provided us with yoga mats and weights. Fuel Up to Play 60 provided us with shirts, shoelaces, and water bottles.
Nice job. Thank you, Olivia. There's a chef right there. Okay, the chef winner.
Good evening. I'm Hope Clark, a sixth grader at Zenetti Montessori School, and I love to cook. The Alfred G. Zenetti Montessori School is proud to share a common goal with many students and staff, promoting healthy living. As a winner of Springfield's 2016 Healthy Breakfast Challenge, I was very excited my school was offering Cooking Club this year. This was made possible by the grants provided by Donors Choose and my teacher, Ms. Bilo Do, who stays after school every Wednesday to supervise us and purchases the vegetables that we use in our dishes. Donors Choose has given us many tools like the skillet and the spiralizers we use. So great thanks to Ms. Bilo Do and Donors Choose. With the grant money, Zenetti was able to purchase a spiralizer. A spiralizer is a kitchen device used to cut vegetables into ribbons or strips resembling noodles or spaghetti. I admit, I'm a very picky eater, and I could probably eat pizza every day if my mom would let me. But the Cooking Club has taught me that I can combine flavors that I enjoy and put them into a healthy dish utilizing the spiralizer. For instance, pizza spaghetti can be made out of zucchini, tomato sauce, and a sprinkle of cheese, and it tastes just as good as regular pizza. To continue to promote health and wellness outside the classroom, we encourage all schools here today to take advantage of the great grants available. Simply apply and create new venues for interests that your students have at your school. The Cooking Club is much more than food. It is about teamwork and putting our math skills to use in educating our peers about the healthy options for eating. Thank you for your attention and have a great night. If you have any questions, please ask.
There we go. Nice job, girls. We'll take that pizza to go. Great job to the Z Team. Springfield Conservatory of Arts is in the house. Mr. Sacher himself, Principal Ryan Kelly is here, and Rochelle Centore, the Assistant Principal. I thought we had a spokesperson there. Charisma Delgado, Quana Carter, Kalia Wilder, Katrina Pearson, Shaniqua Menzi, Dinesha Adja, correct me if I'm wrong, Stokes, come on down. And please tell me your name.
I am Kalia.
Kalia.
Good evening. I am Kalia, and these are my classmates, Charisma and Quana. Today, we would like to share with you what the Conservatory of the Arts has been working on for the past month.
In our school, we have been talking about bullying and ways to prevent it. We decided to create a students group to help any students in our school who may be going through bullying. Our group is called Students Support Group. The members of this group are us three and Samani. And we are the eyes and ears around the school to help identify students who are being mistreated and provide them support during lunchtime and/or after-school hours.
Are we good?
In addition, in Ms. Escalera's...
What's your name? Tell us your name, so we know.
My name is Quana.
Quana, okay.
In addition, in Ms. Escalera's creative writing class, we are reading articles and watching videos about bullying to come up with ideas for interventions to be implanted in our school. We use our artistic skills such as creating scripts, drama, videos, writing stories with interventions for students and parents, composing songs, music, creating posters, artwork, and informative PowerPoints to show our ideas and work.
Thank you, Quana. If you could speak a little louder, young ladies, because that mic there is for the viewing TV audience. But if you could speak louder for us and the crowd, okay? Because we want to hear what you say. Thank you.
We also have been promoting kindness, and this coming week, we will be promoting be present for someone, which means be there for a friend or someone who is in need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Our names are Shaniqua, Dinesha, and Sayana. We are from Springfield Conservatory of the Arts. We are in eighth grade with Ms. Nickerson. We created an after-school club called the Kindness Kickstarters.
Are we good?
Together, my name is Dinesha. Together, we are trying to make our school a kinder and gentle place. We incorporate parts of what we learned from Rachel's challenge, which was created for Rachel Scott, the first student killed at Columbine. We also merged with Start With Hello, which was started by the parents and community affected by the loss of Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown. Based on incentive, we created Kindness Count Week. Every week, we talk about the new ways students and staff can show kindness. Every day at lunch, students can do a positive gossip alert or a sign of appreciation.
Very nice.
My name is Sayana. We designed our own T-shirts that we will wear to catch students in the act of kindness. We had Ms. Centore and Ms. Nickerson role-play a scene where they were unkind, and then they had to rewind and model an act of kindness. Our goal is to continue to meet every week and come up with new ideas on how to spread kindness throughout our school community. We hope to offer motivational initiatives that encourage all students to jump on board.
Great hair, by the way, too. Barber's kid, I know. Great job. Thank you.
I'll speak about it.
Okay, STEM Middle Academy is in the house. And special to me because my nephew, Christopher Cummings, is here with my sister, Giovanna Joanna. And Principal Kevin Laline and Laquia Stanton, Assistant Principal. Ariel Calazo Smith, Christopher Cummings, and Marcus Green, come on down.
My name is Marcus Green. I'm an eighth grader at STEM Middle Academy.
Can you be just a little louder? Because that mic is for TV. We want to really hear what you have to say.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marcus Green. I'm an eighth grader student from STEM Middle Academy. I would like to tell you some of the tools we use at STEM. We use different tools to help us. Most tools that we use to help us is in tech, in the tech, technology. In social studies, we use a website called Kahoot to help us study for tests and quizzes. And we also use a website called Quizlet that also helps us study for tests and quizzes. For sometimes, we use them for competition to see which team has the most points. These were some of the tools that we use at STEM to help us become better learners. Thank you for your time.
Good job, Marcus.
Hi, my name is Ariel. I've been enrolled in this school for about seven months, and I've learned so much. My favorite subject is engineering because not only is it a fun class, but it helps me communicate more with my peers. Some tools that we use are...
You're doing fine, Ariel. You're doing fine. Happens to me too. What tools do you use?
We use...
Maybe Marcus or Christopher, reminder, what tools do you use? Marcus, tell Ariel what tools you use.
It's different from the grades because in eighth grade, we use Kahoot and Quizlet. Those are the tools we use.
Okay, Ariel, what tools do you use?
Here, what about clickers?
Oh.
Well, we use clickers in science to answer questions that our science teacher, Ms. McCarthy, puts up on the smartboard. A clicker, if you don't know what it is, it's a card that on each side, there's a letter, A, B, C, or D. You have to put the side on the letter that you think the answer is to answer the question.
There we go.
And in engineering, we're starting to learn how to build a little shed with extremely excellent structure to hold it up. And we were calculating the height and the width of how it'll hold itself up. And...
You're doing fine, Ariel. You're building a shed to put the clickers in, right?
No.
I still haven't had your skid. You're doing fine.
We have, we're learning how to build this little shed so we can learn to... Learn to... We're just building a little shed.
Okay, very good. Good job, Ariel.
I've been enrolled in this school for about seven months, and I've learned so much. My favorite subject is engineering because...
If we don't mind, just out of respect to the young people, if they just keep their voices down a little bit out there. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, Ariel, it's all yours now.
Not only is it a fun class, but it helps me communicate more with my peers. Another subject I like is math, surprisingly, because in elementary school, math was one of my worst subjects. But after coming to this school, I've learned tactics and other techniques to help me better understand the subject. I'd like to thank some of my teachers, Ms. Saltmarsh, because she helps by breaking down the equations to help me better understand them. Mr. Shore, because if we don't understand something, he puts it in a fun explanation, which is fun, and we understand it. And last but not least, Mr. Swan, because even though our class is crazy, he sees calm and is able to get the class under control in a calm manner. I know I will continue to enjoy my time at STEM Academy.
Nice job, Ariel. All right, there's no shyness with this kid, I'll tell you right now.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Cummings, and I'm a seventh grader at STEM Middle Academy. Here at STEM, we use technology in many ways to help us, you know, excel at learning because it helps. First things first is Quizlet. We use it in social studies because it can help you using flashcards. It can help you using like a makeshift test it kind of makes using all the vocabulary and stuff. And you can like study doing a matching game. And it just kind of helps because sometimes you forget to write down the notes and you don't know what to do, so you gotta go on a computer site and you gotta do it because it helps you to learn. Next thing is MobiMax. It's a site where it basically gives you these like, it can be used for any subject. It gives you any type of like passage or something, and you have to answer questions about it. And if you get a question wrong, you lose points, and it gives you a score at the end of everything, and you gotta hit a certain standard to pass. And depending on how well you do on it, you get game time points, which let you play games on the site. And it's kind of like a reward-based win-win, win-lose kind of thing. And last, we have Schoology, which is basically this, it's this like safe Facebook site, I guess, and you can use it to keep track of, like, you can contact your teachers, you can see what work you have... what work you have, you can see if you need to make up anything or not. And it's basically just, it's like social media, honestly, but there's no socialness. It's just work.[610.16][610.16](LAUGHTER) And, um, this is the technology that we use at STEM Middle Academy. It helps us study, keep in touch with our teachers, and assess ourselves. And in spirit of the Super Bowl this weekend, our schools are going to be showing some team support by wearing some Patriots or Falcons jerseys, whichever you support. And so, either way it goes, I wish you all a good weekend. Go Patriots![638.79][638.79](APPLAUSE)
Nice job, people.[643.79][643.79](APPLAUSE) Good job, STEM. Boy, shy kid, I'll tell you. All right, last but not least, Ballarat Middle School is in the house. We have Devon Kelly, Nasir Whitehead, accompanied by Sarita Gravlin, Assistant Principal. Come on down.[671.41][671.41](APPLAUSE)
I'm here for moral support and my very fancy sound system over here, so if we get a commercial, you're just going to have to bear with us.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Nasir, but everybody calls me Nas. And I wrote a rap about my school and how I feel about it.[697.82][697.82](MUSIC PLAYING) We the Ballarat Tigers, and our colors is green. We a small school, so we got to work as a team. We a safe school. People might think that we mean. They might tell it was just bad kids and kids from the street. But we just try and do our best. We just trying to make it out. We just trying to graduate so we can make our family proud. And Ballarat, yeah, we friends, but we like family now. Yeah, we build each other up when they try to hold us down. Yeah, we help each other out when them problems come around. And if you ask me, we got the best staff in town. Yeah, they always give respect when the same respect is found. People said that we bad, but we just like to live wild. Ballarat Safe is my school, and yes, I say it proud. I used to be bad, but I'm an honor rose now. Never pull my head down. Yeah, they help us when we found. We the Ballarat Tigers, people try and steal our style, and I'm trying to do my best. Eh, say, yeah. We the Ballarat Tigers, people try and steal our style. If you trying to see what we about, then come check us out, eh. And that's it.
Nice job, man.[772.22][772.22](APPLAUSE) Naz, way to go. Can you rap some Sinatra for me, too? That was good. I think that closes out our middle school speak-out. That was absolutely outstanding. Give yourselves a round of applause.[787.82][787.82](APPLAUSE) You are more than welcome to stay, but we'll have a one-minute recess before we start our formal meeting. That concludes the middle school speak-out. Thank you. Christopher, good job, buddy. What's the, um... Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? For the record, School Committee Woman Denise Hurst is away at a family event, and School Committee Woman Rosa Perez is under the weather. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
President?
Present.
President?
Present.
President?
President. Ms. Perez, President? 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 Yes. We're going to have a moment of silence. Again, I'd like to dedicate this to our lost students at Central High School, Katrina Adriana Cassidy, and to Andrew Savage. God rest their souls.[861.12][861.12](MUSIC PLAYING)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all so much.
Mayor? Can you get her out from in front of the screen so we can see?
Oh, okay. To the diographer from TV 22, can you move just a little bit? Because they want to be able to see the screen. That was from Chris Collins, so don't get him on TV at all.
That's right.[898.12][898.12](LAUGHTER)
Thank you, dear. Okay, we'll now move to approve the minutes of the January 3, 2017 organizational meeting, the January 5, 2017 regular meeting, and the January 19, 2017 working sessions. Any questions or comments?
Some more, Mayor.
All those in favor say aye. There's a motion by Mr. Orlan. All those in favor, second? Is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Gresham, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll now move to informational discussion items. And A is to recognize Frederick Harris School for moving from Level 2 to Level 1 accountability. My daughters in the younger days went there, and it's a proud moment for School Committee Woman Chris Collins. The apple doesn't fall too far away from the tree. Shannon Collins is the principal. So again, to recognize Frederick Harris School for moving from Level 2 to Level 1, numero uno accountability status, Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving to Level 1 status in Massachusetts is an incredible feat for an urban school. And Shannon and her team have done just a fabulous job at Harris School. A few years ago, we had them in front of us going from Level 3 to 2, when they said we're going to get to Level 1, and they have. This team also had great results at Dormin School. So we know when we have those kind of results, it's a great effort. Oh, look at this. Cheerleaders and everything, right? Great, great effort on behalf of the teachers and the leadership at the school. So congratulations for your second major success. Please come on.[997.62][997.62](APPLAUSE)
You know, I'd also like to say, before you start, Principal Collins, Shannon, how thoughtful the outpouring of support for the unfortunate tragedy that occurred at Central High School from all our schools, whether Putnam, but Frederick Harris, special outreach on the bands and other kind aspects that were done at Putnam with a $500 check donation. But just tonight, these bands, Central Strong, Shannon, to you, your administration, staff, teachers, and kids, we appreciate that. And of course, we got the rah-rah pom-poms here.
Your talks.
And you're so generous with the T-shirts. My playing days, maybe I could have gotten to a large, not anymore, though.[1040.82][1040.82](LAUGHTER)
You have dogs.
Yes, I do, and they will get it. Thank you.
That's another learning nobody talks about that's just as important. So again, my name is Shannon Collins. I am the principal at Harris and have been for the last eight years.[1053.82][1053.82](APPLAUSE) On behalf of our students, their families, and our staff, we just want to thank you for taking a moment to celebrate this success. It definitely has been fought hard for. If we knew we were going to get invited back, we maybe would have changed things a little, because this is definitely intimidating. But we just want to also thank you for giving us the opportunity to share a little bit about our journey to this place. Over the last eight years, we have risen from Level 3 to Level 2 and now finally arrived at Level 1. So our work every day, just like in every Springfield public school, is engaging every member of our school community in the work. It was laid down from the top from Superintendent Warwick, and it has reached every level of our staff, paying significant attention to the fact that no one of those puzzle pieces is more important than the other.
By the way, your ingenuity is fantastic. I don't know what the hell happened to our screen that we usually have here.
I don't know either.
But that is very good.
But we brought post-it papers, so...
We're trying to do the best we can with our little...
Yeah, the budget is limited, yeah.
It's not in here? It's in the closet, right?
I think they just...
Anyhow, the significant importance of obviously recognizing the importance of each of those components, but making sure that each of them are linked, because without linking each piece of that puzzle, we would not be able to provide that effective instruction in every classroom. So we'll begin this evening by just talking a little bit about how we use data, some of our staff would say ad nauseam, to make every decision at Harris. And so, when we received your invitation, we noticed the date was Groundhog's Day. We sat down as an ILT and looked at our presentation from a few years ago, when we rose from Level 3 to Level 2. And it felt that you might feel a little bit like Bill Murray in that movie, Groundhog Day, because a lot of what we're going to present to you today about data and really about all aspects of our work, we've been doing for a long time. We are relentless and deliberate in our use of data, not just the data we collect from our students, but the data we collect from research, and being extremely miserly with our budget and making sure that we are investing in the most effective resources that we can get our hands on, and implementing through our own leadership teams and PLCs the most effective practices that we can possibly present to our students. Paying careful attention for consistency purposes, that what happens class to class and grade to grade and throughout the whole school is done with fidelity, and each piece builds upon the next. And what we've gotten really good at, and we feel like is different from when we presented to you a couple of years ago, is making time for that reflection and refinement. So although you're going to feel a little bit like Bill Murray covering that Groundhog Day story, what is different is we have taken those sets of best practices, and we have stuck to them, and we have gotten better at it every single day. So with that, I'm going to introduce Kara Harris, our Assistant Principal, who will talk to you a little bit about our curriculum.[1253.82][1253.82](APPLAUSE)
Shannon, Shannon said I am Assistant Principal at Frederick Harris School. This is my second year as the AP there. Prior to that, I was the ELA ILS for five years. So I've been around this work at the school and happy to be back, a little terrified, but happy to be here for the reason why we're here. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what we think makes our curriculum consistent and rigorous at Harris School. The first thing that came to our heads was that we don't just stay on the path. We don't just use the primary resource provided by the district. We go out and we find other resources that are going to address the common core, that are going to engage our students, that are going to find ways to find those gaps that those students need us to fill. Sometimes we just come right back to the path, and sometimes we find resources out there that really do a good job for our kids. Just an example, we have Elastic News. We've used it for the last four years, maybe, as a great addition to our ELA curriculum. It has current events, so it gets into social studies and some science, but it also puts complex text in front of kids that is engaging for students. It has visuals for them, and it's not just the same old primary resource that everybody is using. And it also has videos and things that students can get engaged with. So resources is something that we go out of the box and find what we need for our children. This second slide is kind of, this second phase is kind of like my baby as the ELA ILS. This is what we started back then, and I'm happy to say that I presented these exact same slides to you three years ago, when we moved up from Level 3 to Level 2. And we are still using these exact same rubrics with these exact same organizers with our students for writing to text. It has made a drastic difference in how our students write and respond to text. We did a ton of research about what students needed to do to respond to MCAS questions and came up with this organizer to help them visually see what they needed to do. And then we tweaked it a little bit, so that it was a gradual release from kind of full support to just a blank piece of paper with lines for them to write their answer. We then color-coded it for them, so they could visually see what their answer was supposed to look like, so they could picture it in their head as they were writing it.
Familiarity.
We then adjusted it for our Grade 2 students and our Grade 1 students. So with the exception of kindergarten, this is a building-wide practice. Those organizers had rubrics taught to them that, again, we did a lot of research, what did MCAS, what was MCAS looking for? How could we put a rubric together that we could provide very specific feedback that would support the teacher, figuring out what kids needed to know, and would support the students? What can the students get out of that feedback to make their work better? Took a lot of time to come up with these rubrics back then. We had them for Grade 3 to 5. We adjusted it for Grade 2, and we adjusted it for Grade 1. And then PARC came out, and all the criteria changed. So we went back to the drawing board, and we recreated new ones. So these ones are, I think, even better. They're for our Grade 3 to 5 students. They're a checklist for students. It's a rubric for teachers and students. It gives feedback right on the same exact piece of paper. It helps students know what they need to do, even just to get one more point on their answer. This is what I could have done differently. We took it from Grade 3 to 5, based on the PARC criteria, and then we adjusted it to meet the needs of Grade 2 and even Grade 1. So again, from Grades 1 to 5, this is consistent building-wide, and this PARC rubric has been for the last two years. Before that, those rubrics were in place now for a total of about five years. So our students know this. They live it, they breathe it, they talk about it every day. It's up in every classroom, every teacher. So we saw so much success with the work that we did with the ELA rubrics. We then carried that over into our math rubrics. Writing to Explain became something that was very, very difficult for our students, so we created a rubric that was similar to them. So they would already know the concept of the rubric. It now was just math content versus ELA content. We adjusted it and made it appropriate for Grades 3 to 5, tweaked it for Grade 2, and tweaked it for Grade 1. And kindergarten has even made a little bit of their own that they're working on now. A big piece that is different from the last time we stood before you, moving from Level 3 to Level 2, is we had a lot of work with our writing, but not as much with our independent reading block and our reading levels. So since the last time we were here, we implemented Star and Accelerated Reader, which is one of those resources I was mentioning before. Our reading block now consists, for the last two, three years, has now consisted of a huge chunk of time where students are just independently reading. Prior to that, prior to this resource, independent reading may have looked like students just flipping through the pages of a book, not really paying attention to what they were reading, not really caring, teachers not being able to hold them accountable, because teachers don't read every single book in their library to know what the book is about. But this resource has helped us. Accelerated Reader has quizzes on every book. The kids can go on and take quizzes when they're done. They earn points. It shows the teacher whether they really read the book. It gives data to the teacher on what they understood in the book and what they didn't. And the best part is, is that the students track their own data and track their own goal. We have something at the end of every term that we celebrate for the kids who made their goal, and it is specific to their reading level, not specific to the grade level. So everybody has the opportunity of making their reading goal, even if they are reading behind grade level. Every classroom has one of these boards, however they decided to do it, but every student tracks their own data and moves their own piece up to the top. That is a big change in our reading program, which has made a drastic difference in our reading levels at Harris School. The last piece I'm going to talk to you about is reading walls and math walls, and these exact slides were from three years ago when we presented to you. They have not changed. We still use them with fidelity every day in our K-2 classes. Our reading walls, the philosophy behind it was, our kindergarten teachers were teaching just how it used to be, one letter a week. So 26 weeks went by before our kindergartners were exposed to all the letters and the letter sounds. With a reading wall, every kindergarten class at Harris School is exposed to all the letters in the first six weeks of school, and they all own a rectangle on that wall, and they become the teacher of that rectangle all year. The kids start to run this wall. It's 15 minutes out of our reading block. They own it. They put up the sentences. They work with their families to find an object that matches their letter and letter sound, and they become the teacher of this every day. So it's a quick reinforcement of all those letters and letter sounds every day, and kids know their letters before the first 26 weeks of school now. So they start to read faster, because they have their letters and letter sounds faster. We have the same concept for our math walls. This is in our K-2 classes. It's not letters and letter sounds, but it is all those priority standards in math that you just have to keep coming back to, to teach kids math skills. Addition, subtraction, time, money, number sense, bundling, calendar. It's not just your typical morning meeting, how many days do we have left of school? It's everything. It's all of those standards, and all of those standards are represented on that wall somewhere. And the teacher shows them how to do it first, and then after the first six weeks of school, the kids run the math wall for the rest of the year. And the teacher just tweaks, depending on the standard, and changing the rigor of the task. It helps them, it's a reteaching tool. It's almost like the old-fashioned spiral review, where you take out the old worksheet and you do so many questions that is a spiral review of standards. This is a spiral review that is active and visual and engaging for students, and we do it every day in our math block for 15 minutes. And that has definitely seemed to help our kids pick up on those skills in math. So I am going to introduce to you Alyssa Clark, who is the Math ILS at our school, and she is going to talk to you about coaching.[1761.32][1761.32](APPLAUSE)
Hi, Alyssa. I wasn't here three years ago. I was a part of the Harris staff, so I'm a little nervous. It's my first time here. I'm going to present the puzzle piece, Coach Develop and Evaluate Educators Based on a Clear Vision of Strong Instruction. And one thing that we do to promote strong instruction is our departmentalized organization. So in Grades 2 to 3, it's not like one teacher teaches all the subjects. We have a teacher that teaches ELA and Social Studies, and then a teacher that teaches Math and Science, and then they switch, so the kids get all of the subjects from two teachers. and Science, and then they switch so the kids get all of the subjects from two teachers. And then in Grades 4 to 5, it's more like a middle school model where there are four teachers. One teaches Math, Science, Social Studies, ELA, and the kids rotate within them to get all the subjects and they have four teachers. And I think what this really does is our kindergarten and first grade teachers are kind of spread thin. They need to know all the standards for Science, for Math, for Social Studies, for ELA. These teachers have one or two subjects and they can really become well-first in them. They know the standards backwards and forwards. And so I think that's really where we promote strong instruction. One other way we promote strong instruction is our PLC structure. So if you don't know what a PLC is, it's a professional learning community where teachers come together and they work together on certain standards. They might pick a topic and they'll go back to their class and come back and talk about how it went. So what we used to do was the teachers had to come every week and meet with their grade level team. And they came every week and they weren't getting much out of it. It kind of was like a dreaded time, I have to go to PLC today. So what we did was we changed it and we made it a voluntary PLC. So now they could volunteer to be in particular PLCs. The only stipulation was that they must complete at least one PLC per year. So, and we had teachers doing four sometimes. So they were signing up for the topics. There were five coverage teachers that would come in and cover for those teachers. And then the PLC meetings are held from 8:45 to 9:35 on a rotation that makes sense for the PLC. So some PLCs meet once a week. Some PLCs meet three weeks in a row and then they're done. It's up to that PLC. The coverage, I think this is really crucial, the coverage will follow the lesson plans left by the classroom teacher, which means the kids aren't missing anything. They're doing their same routine even though their teacher is in that PLC meeting. PLCs are revisited on a six-week cycle, so they continue with the PLC. They might want to make new groups. They might want to change groups. This year, we're doing a lot of bright space PLCs. So we might have that topic throughout the year and different teachers cycle in and out. And what they can do is they can brainstorm together, bring it to their classrooms, and then come back and share. And then progress is always shared out on our extended days to let the staff know what they're doing in their PLC. And the last piece is Coaching Developing and Evaluating. So one thing that's really crucial at Harris is that our principals are daily, are visiting the classrooms daily. They're always in the classrooms, maybe once, maybe twice a day. So the kids are used to them coming in, the teachers are used to them coming in, and they can kind of collect information of how the teachers are doing and how the students are doing in particular classes. They also do unannounced observations where they come in and they observe a 10-minute piece of the lesson and then they give our teachers feedback. And that kind of leads into the evaluations. So with them being in the classrooms all day, they can see what our strengths are, what our model teachers are going to be and who we might send a teacher in to watch that model teacher. They can see where our weaknesses are, where a teacher might need coaching and what kind of coaching they might need. And then we have weekly leadership team meetings where the four of us get together and meet and we kind of catch up on what happened the last week, work on anything we need to, and it kind of keeps us all on the same page. We also have a vertical ELA and a vertical math team. So that's a team that consists of teachers K to 5. We meet after our ILS meetings, so me and Lori, who's the ELA ILS, can bring back any information from the district and the team can decide how that will work at Harris. How can we use that at Harris? And then our PDs throughout the year, our August PD, November, January, they're all consistent and they build on each other throughout the year. We don't do one thing in August, completely change it up for the teachers in November and then completely do something different. It's kind of aligned. And last, we started doing this, we're filming our own teachers. So we used to show a lot of videos and they're not Springfield kids. And so the teachers would say, of course that can happen in that community, what about here? So we think it's very important to go into the teachers that are our strengths and videotape them to show the other teachers, look, this is what they're doing with Harris kids. These are our kids. And it's been a really powerful thing this year. And then we share some of those out at extended days so the whole staff can see them. And that is it for my puzzle piece. So, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lori Kyle. I'm the ELA ILS at Harris. And I'm going to be talking to you about the social, emotional, and academic safety nets and supports for all students and families. So a happy kid is an effective kid who wants to come to school. So we have taken both, we have a nice balance between proactive approaches and reactive approaches. So kind of like a peanut butter and jelly sandwich. You can't have one without the other. So I want to talk first about the peanut butter, the proactive things that we do at Harris. Along with the traditional student of the month, we also have term assemblies in where we reward students and acknowledge them for their academic achievements and their efforts during each term. We also have an end-of-year assembly where each grade level nominates a student to receive an award for their academic achievement for the year and their effort for the year. And the student who is, wins for the grade level gets a Kindle for their academic achievement and the student who wins for their effort for the year gets a new bicycle. And we do that in every grade level, K to 5. Some of the other things we do to promote literacy and involvement and engagement with the students is we have book swaps a couple times a year. We also have, for Read Across America, which is going to be coming up for Dr. Seuss's birthday in March, we do a take-home activity where each student works with their family to read a poem and they answer some questions and do some activities. And the grade level that responds with the most participation gets an ice cream party. And we also have something called Hot Picks, which each teacher chooses their own book that they want to showcase for the month and recommend to their students. They put their book out and the students read it and then they have a response, they fill out a response sheet to that book and how they felt about the book. I collect those monthly and then I award, I pick out ones that are good and I award the students with a free book to take home after they've done a hot pick. We usually do about 30 kids a month get a free book to take home. We also have, Kara had spoke earlier about Accelerated Reader. So every term, the students have a goal set and every book they read, they have to take a quiz and they earn points towards this goal. So for every student that reaches their goal for that term, we have a big AR party and we do things like pizza or we have a make-your-own sundae. And that is every term and the kids, no pun intended, literally eat it up. They love to go to these parties and constantly stopping me in the, they have a flower that grows on, it's a graphic and they're constantly stopping me, my flower's growing, my flower's growing. So it's really a great event that they love to do. We also have our monthly attendance incentives that we give to students who have perfect attendance for the month. And then we've started the past couple of years, we've started a, to acknowledge the students who have scored proficient or advanced on their PARC assessments with a pancake breakfast. And they come down to the cafeteria, we play music and it's a very exciting event and they have strawberry whipped cream pancakes, which are delicious. And they also receive a shirt, the same shirts that you guys have up there to acknowledge their achievements. And last year, one of the things we, well, a couple of years ago, we started mulling this over and we started doing the, what we did was the Park Olympics. So in order to review for the Park Olympics, for the Park Assessment, what we had done is we decided to involve some physical activity with the review. So the kids come to the gym and they have to do some relay activities. And at the end of their relay activity, they have to sit and they have to answer some questions, some math park-like questions or reading park-like questions with a partner. And that shows you some kids doing that. And then the class that is the achieves, gets the most right, is the most proficient in those questions, gets to have the park trophy in their classroom and they earn the Olympic trophy. And it's really an exciting event for them. All right, so when things in that peanut butter and jelly sandwich get a little sticky, like the jelly and things, we then need to take a little more reactive approach. And Shannon's going to speak to you about that.
So in every life, there is a sticky situation. For some, there are more than others. So in order to support our students who may have a few more sticky situations than we would like, we have created a structure within our school that enables the teacher to do the urgent business of the day, to keep teaching, but also meets the social, emotional, and academic needs of those students who get themselves into sticky situations. So we actually have a separate setting that those students can be referred to. It is staffed by a teacher. A huge portion of the work that occurs there first and foremost is identifying why I can't be in class right now, what is not working for me. And after helping them through that and brainstorming and building their toolbox, so to speak, so that when they return to class, they will be successful, whatever work they might have missed while working that out is completed there in that classroom with the support of that teacher. So we have certainly maximized learning in that situation. The students in the classroom have continued working with their teacher and that student who needed some extra guidance has definitely, hopefully gained some problem-solving skills while making sure that whatever they missed while they were outside of the classroom has been completed with the assistance of that one-on-one teacher. And we have definitely found that it has maximized learning for all students, for those students that struggle the most and for those students who are ready to keep on going right in the classroom with their teacher. And it has definitely had a positive impact on our school climate. And these are just some of the posters that we use to motivate our kids when they get referred to that classroom. So last but not least, we did gift you with a little something from Harris. And it kind of rings true for us. Three of the four presenters this evening got our start as Springfield kids who are products of the Springfield Public Schools and proud Central graduates. And just like our homegrown mayor and our homegrown superintendent, we think that has a little something to do with our success. So thank you so much for inviting us to present this evening. And that's a wrap.
Any questions or comments?
I'm not supposed to speak. Now you realize that, Mayor.
You can speak.
Just like, just like sometimes children don't do what their parents ask, sometimes parents don't do what their children ask either. When Mr. Warwick and I were both principals, we would, we always say, and as Shannon says too, it is the staff and the teachers around you that make you look good and that bring it all together. When we moved beyond being principals to other areas, our favorite quote was, "Show me a good principal and I'll show you a good school." On a personal note, there are families that have legacies, whether it be in entertainment or whether it be police work or education. And sometimes the next generation, in your favorite singer Sinatra, is not as, lives, not quite lives up to what you would hope it to be. But Shannon reverses that field. She is a far better educator than I ever was. And I couldn't be more proud of the educator and the person that she has become.
Beautiful.
Now that I've completely embarrassed you, I'll be quiet.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Well, if your father was singing a Sinatra song, maybe in Irish lyric, he'd say, "You did it your way. How's that?" But we're just really, now before I turn it over to Superintendent Warwick and the school committee members, thank you for your continued belief and investment in our kids. I know many times people will say, boy, it's tough to teach in an urban center. Yes, but it's not impossible. And it's reflected in the scores and all the testing that is being done, but also probably more importantly, in how our kids are moving forward. A great testament that three in the house tonight are from Central High School giving back to the city of Springfield Public School System. We appreciate that. I don't envy what you do. I respect what you do. And Level 1, Urban, numero uno. Not suburban, not rural, urban. And we have a number of that, so from Superintendent Warwick, the school committee, and the teachers, administrators, our schools. And we are making it happen and we continue to conquer those challenges. So congratulations. And again, Shannon, the apple doesn't fall too far away from the tree. Any other school committee members? Mr. Aland?
I congratulate you guys on the great job and I see the effort. And I do remember when you guys brought it three years ago and all the stuff that you were doing and you just improved on it. And I know PARC wasn't easy. I know that threw a curve ball, but you guys were able to adjust and continue on your feet for Level 1. So congratulations and a great work as a team as well.
Any other school committee members? Superintendent Warwick?
Oh, just great job to the staff. It all comes down to the staff at the school and the leadership and just an incredible job. And to do it while taking a tougher assessment, that's just incredible. So congratulations and thank you from the bottom of my heart.
We, thank you Superintendent Warwick. We have an official citation. Springfield Public Schools, the Springfield School Committee, February 2nd, 2017 recognizes Frederick Harris School leaders, teachers, staff, students. Through their hard work and dedication, Frederick Harris has moved from a Level 2 accountability status to a Level 1 performing school. Signed by myself, Mayor Dominic J. Sarno, and Superintendent Dan Warwick and school committee members. We'd love to have you come down so we could shake your hands. Great job. I thought he was, I thought he was going to tear up over there too.
Yeah.
I know. Hey Shannon, good thing you were here. He would have wore shorts, you know?
She just said that.
Another big round of applause for Frederick Harris School, Level 1. Okay, more good news. And we're going to recognize four students.
Oh, thank you.
Selected as ambassadors for Governor Charlie Baker's Community Service Program. This is the Project 351 program. And before I turn it over to Superintendent Warwick, we have Damian Gonzalez from Southend Middle School just spoke, Henry Greer from Springfield Conservatory of the Arts. And again, Southend Middle School is Principal de Spirit. And Conservatory of the Arts is Principal Ryan Kelly, Mr. Soccer. Lila, Leah Cabodia, Chestnut Gifted Tag Middle School, that's Principal Colleen O'Connor I see in the back. And Leva, correct me, McLendon from Kylie Middle School, my old junior high school. Mr. Basketball Principal Chris Sutton is here. So let me turn it over to Superintendent Warwick.
Thank you, Mayor. We always recognize in Springfield how important community service is. In fact, we put it back into our curriculum for all of our youngsters at the high school level. But I think this is an important program where our kids are part of a statewide effort and focused on community service. So it's really important for us. These representatives were chosen from all of our kids in the city, so from 6,000 students. These students were chosen as our leaders. So we'd like to bring them up now. Azelle leads that effort. I was wondering if Azelle could come up and kind of give us a skin.
Come on up, kids.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Azelle.
I have the privilege of presenting to you the students who represent us in Project 351. They are part of a group which is more than 300 students, all 8th graders from throughout the Commonwealth. And they meet in Boston several times a year and they do community service of all different sorts. And they also get specific resources that are made available to them. These students were all nominated by their principals based on the fact that their penchant for leadership bends toward community service, whether it's helping students with homework, helping teachers in the classroom, helping in the community, helping in the home. These are students who are really focused on altruistic sort of areas. And specifically, Project 351 focuses on compassion, commitment, humility, and kindness. And so it's a project that allows the state to tell these students that we recognize these as very important values to keep, especially in this day and age. So I would like to present before you, they would all love to come forward, Damian Gonzalez, Southend Middle School. They each might have a few words that they might like to say.
Don't know really where to start. I'd like to thank you all for, one, for thank you all. I'd like to thank you all for, one, for thank you all for giving me the time to share today and to show me, like, to show all of us how it is and how hard you guys work, like the mayor, superintendent, and the school committee, how hard you guys all work.
Thank you, Damian.
Olivia McClendon of Kylie Middle School.
All right. Well done, Olivia. Olivia, is that your mom? Okay.
We've got our principal from Kylie here.
Isn't it great when parents embarrass you?
Basketball, Chris, nice job.
Hi, my name is Olivia McLendon. I am the ambassador for Kylie Middle School, and I am very glad to, very glad and excited to have the opportunity to be an ambassador and to show my school I can be a leader. I was very shocked when I found out that I was an ambassador. I didn't really believe it. When I found out I had went to, when I, when I had went to Boston, I had met new people and made new friends. It was a great time for me to get out of my comfort zone and help out different people that are in need and less fortunate. I feel very honored and proud to be in this, in the program.
And last but certainly not least, Leila Cabodia of Chestnut Middle School, talented
I just would like to thank my teachers and principals for nominating me to be one of the people to go up as representing my school. I think it's a great honor to represent Springfield and go to Boston and meet new friends to do community service for others, and it really taught me that not everyone has certain things that we have, and to give back to your community, and it really improved my leadership skills, so I'm really excited about that.
Students, the floor, we have certificates for, we're gonna bring you up, but I don't know if there's any questions or comments from our school committee members at all?
Congratulations.
It's nice when we see, and it's, I wish the papers were here to print about these kinds of children. They're always there when kids do something wrong, but they need to be here for this, and I'm glad to see 22 is here for this.
22 is here, yes.
To the Republican, there is a wonderful, you'll get my notes, it was yesterday's Neighborhood section. All you kids are in it there, so that's great. So we have certificates. Let me read one, and we're gonna, I'll call you up. Springfield Public Schools, Springfield School Committee, February 2nd, 2017, Certificate of Recognition. And this is for all the kids. First one here is Damian Gonzalez, have demonstrated exemplary ethic of service and potential, you're already leaders anyway, potential for leadership, reflecting the values, compassion, commitment, humility, and kindness upon being selected from the state. Governor Baker, Project 351 Ambassador. So the first one up, come on down, Damian Gonzalez. Damian, congratulations to you twice today, Damian. Congratulations, Damian. Okay, I tell you, he looks like a young Nat King Cole, too, but. Henry Greer, come on down, Henry. Nice presentation up there, too.
Great job. Thank you. Good job.
Good boy, Henry. Good job. Ms. Cabodia, come on down. And I know your family, too. Congratulations.
School code, I like it. Congratulations. Good job.
Last but not least, Mom, where's Mom? Are you there? Okay, Mom. Olivia McLendon, come on down, Olivia. And that's never embarrassing to have a proud mom there. Olivia, congratulations. You've been good work.
Great job. Really proud of you. Good job.
Congratulations. Way to go, Mom.
Yes, indeed.
And I need your help. Need you to continue to be great ambassadors for the city of Springfield, and I need you to help all of us lead the city forward. Thanks for representing us on the state. Good luck. Thanks.
Great job.
Okay, now we're going to the section, items requiring a vote of the school committee. A is to approve Central High School students' trip to Iceland, April 20th, 2018 through April 27th, 2018. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, I'm recommending approval of this trip. You have an informational piece in your package about it. This is a great opportunity for our kids, so it's our next April vacation. We have some staff members here, Gary and Erica, if anyone has any questions, but I'm recommending approval.
Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Hearing none, there's motion by Mr. Alon, is her second. Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more insufficient votes, this matter passes. I just want to know if the boss, Mrs. Cornell, is gonna go on that trip, too?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Anthony, do you want to add to that?
Yeah. B is to approve the City of Springfield High School Certificate of Attainment for Lord Lanslot Lozado. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Ken, recommending approval. This student has fulfilled all the requirements for the certificate of attainment, so I'm recommending approval.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins, second by Mr. Alon. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, more insufficient votes, this matter passes. Lord, congratulations. C is to accept, to, excuse me, to approve the acceptance of the Mass Grand Supplementary Support Promises Practices Grant. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yep, recommending approval of this grant. This grant has been very helpful to us over the years. Yolanda Johnson, who has spearheaded these efforts, is here. If anyone has any questions of the grant, if Yolanda wants to come up, but some of the special efforts we've had with graduation coaches and a lot of extra time and effort, making sure we have a fit for every child, and we're getting them through to our diplomas, and that's the reason for the increase in the graduation and dropout rate. Yolanda, you want to add anything for us?
I just would say that it was a great opportunity that the state had this additional funds to support the district in our promising practices, which really demonstrated our growth over the last few years.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor. Motion by Mr., motion by Ms. Gresham, is her second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alon. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient votes, this matter passes. Thank you, Yolanda, very much. D is to approve the acceptance of the System for Student Success Action Plan Grant awarded to Homer Street Elementary School and the Edward P. Bolin Elementary School, and I know both principals are here, Ms. Roberts and Ms. Bukowski are also here. Superintendent Warwick?
Thanks, and Julie Donovan from our office, that leads up all those efforts. As you know, we've invested a lot in PPIS, City Connects, and other systems of support, which have gone a long way to improving the behavioral piece in our schools. This is a grant to give us some extra help there. The principals and Julie are here to give you any further details on it if you need it. Again, all these grants have been vetted through business and finance, so they've all been through our finance subcommittee, so I don't know if the chair wanted to speak to us.
Any questions or comments from the school committee, or Ms. Gresham?
Can you explain it, Mr. Mayor? I mean, what is it?
So I'll bring up Julie and the principals, and they can give you a little more information on it.
Julie Donovan, this is just a basic planning grant from DESI, which enables the two teams from Bolin and Homer to analyze data, climate and culture data, learning, learners, more like learning engagement, behavior data, suspension data, and to see kind of where the gaps are and where we can put other strategies or interventions into place.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
It received unanimous support in the subcommittee.
That is from Mr. Collins. Again, unanimous support, support from the subcommittee. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor. Motion by Mr. Alon is second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes, more insufficient votes, this matter passes. Thank you very much. E is to approve the acceptance of the Empowerment Zone New Classrooms Teach to Work Grant awarded to Forest Park Middle School and Chestnut Talented Gifted Tag Middle School.
Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, this is a really exciting new math program. We're using our technology to employ it. It's a technology-based program, but again, the teaching element is very, very important for it. It's a very expensive program, but it gives kids immediate feedback, and every day, every lesson is based on where the kids are at from the day before, and they get immediate feedback. Again, it's an expensive program to employ, but the teachers at a grade level all work together and deliver the math program. The kids are in different stations every day based on the skills they need. So something we're looking at, we wanted to bring into the district, and with this grant and some other supports, because it's costly program, we're experimenting with it at two of the schools, and I've been in the classrooms, and it's really exciting and a promising practice for us. So I'm recommending we accept the grant to help us implement this.
It also went through budget and finance, and we got unanimous approval. It's a very powerful tool, and it, and it really brings education to an individual student level, so we were happy to recommend the acceptance of this grant.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments?
I also want to add, I want to add, Mayor, that I'm glad to see Mass Mutual and other, you know, local businesses stepping up to the plate. It is, it is a good grant, Chris, and I think it's gonna help the schools move forward with it.
Mass Mutual, again, has been a great corporate citizen for 165 years, whether in insurance, education, economic development, they've always been there, so that's good. I'm glad we're able to obtain these grants. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins, is her second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. More insufficient vote, this matter passes.
F is to approve the Teachers Club.
We had talked about this in the past, an opportunity to continue to recruit our own and develop our own teachers out of, from our own kids. We saw some of the benefit of that tonight, but we've resurrected the appropriation now for the Teachers Club at all of our high schools, so we can begin to develop our own kids, show an interest in teaching. We have a program forum, both at Stick and over at Westfield State, we have our Reach to Teach program, to continue to move them through the program and bring them back as our own teachers, which we think will help us in a lot of ways. We have trouble recruiting and retaining, and the diversity element will be helpful, too. So recommending approval of this club, these clubs, excuse me, because it's for every high school.
I think this is great. Any, thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Hearing none, motion.
It's a great move backwards to something that worked very, very well, the Future Teachers Club. Back to the future. It's a.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Highly recommended by the committee.
Some of the best ideas aren't necessarily new ideas. We resurrected something that had kind of been pushed aside over the years, but I think it's long overdue.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Ms. Gresham, yeah?
Yes. Is it district-wide?
Every high school.
Every high school.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, there was a motion on the floor from Mr. Alon, is her second.
Second.
Second, second by Vice Chair Attorney Murphy. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. More insufficient vote, this matter passes. Thank you.
G is to approve resolutions regarding the Springfield Empowerment Zone Horace Mann Charter School application for the John F. Kennedy Middle School Building in which the UPEN is identified as the educational management organization. Superintendent Warwick, please.
As you know, when Unlocking Potential came into Springfield, they originally came in on a Horace Mann charter, but agreed to come in as a zone school. The benefit to the city of them staying as a zone school is that we can have the kids who live in that boundary go to the school instead of busing Citywide and busing different kids into the school. So they've agreed to hold that charter in abeyance and stay as a zone school. By voting on this tonight, we won't have to bring it back every year for them to continue to operating as a zone school, which is, again, tremendous advantage to the city. Busing costs are saved incredibly, plus kids ought to be in their neighborhood school, so this would allow us not to bring it back every year and have them stay as a zone school and then only invoke the charter at some point if they ever felt they needed to. Attorney Phelps worked on the language with, with the state. The state is requiring this vote, or they could trigger the charter, which, again, is not advantageous for Springfield.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Attorney Phelps, can you clarify, please, for the school committee?
So the predicates for this resolution are that it has to be that the Empowerment Zone, ZEP, makes a proposal to the committee of a Horace Mann at John F. Kennedy Middle School, consistent with the Addendum A to the underlying memorandum of understanding or memorandum with the ZEP. And then the second resolution is that the Springfield School Committee would not unreasonably withhold, condition, or delay approval, provided that the application is substantially similar to the application you've already approved. So not really sure why DESI wanted this additional language. It is consistent with, and I pushed back to make it consistent with what you have already approved in the Addendum A, and making certain that it's already what you had approved with the Charter School application that UP had previously submitted to you. So it's really no harm, no foul, not sure why we're doing it, but wanted to make sure that DESI felt that it was necessary with UP relinquishing its existing Horace Mann charter.
Thank you, Attorney Phelps. Any questions or comments for Attorney Phelps or Superintendent Warwick? Mr. Collins, and I'll go to Ms. Gresham. Mr. Collins?
Has UP approved this resolution?
Yes.
They have.
Yes, they did. They're reading.
Well, in that case, then I will make the comment I was gonna make, because if they wasn't, if they hadn't, I probably wouldn't. In many ways, this is an advantage, because the law says that we may not unreasonably hold, uphold a, an application for Horace Mann. This goes a little further, it says, "We won't unreasonably hold as long as it lives up to what we have previously approved." So it's actually stronger than the existing language.
Thank you, Mr. Warwick. And it makes it stronger.
Attorney Phelps helped us with the language on this, and so appreciative.
Thank you, Attorney, thank you, Mr. Collins. Ms. Gresham?
Yes, so, this is my first time hearing of this. So it went through the board of the.
UP. It came through UP, it came through Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's a requirement that they said we had to complete by approving this again. Doesn't make a lot of sense to us, but it's a DESI requirement that their lawyers advised us to make this vote.
And here's why, it's really just reinforcing what you've already agreed to. But DESI said that with, the only change is, with UP relinquishing its existing charter, DESI wanted a vote from the school committee reinforcing what you've already agreed to.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Any other questions or comments? And thank you for your efforts, Attorney Phelps.
Yeah, Attorney Phelps was terrific on this, again.
Hearing no other questions or comments, there's a motion on the floor.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alon. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes. Thank you. H, now, and I spoke with Treasurer Deb Goldberg, had called earlier in the week. The Mass School Building Authority has been a fantastic partner. We are going to continue through my, the city side and Superintendent Warwick, to be aggressive in rehabbing and building new schools. As you know, we had well over 300 million. I'm very hopeful that we can get to a half a billion dollars of school improvements. So tonight, technically, I will read them out, and Superintendent Warwick can explain. I want to thank.
I want to thank Pat Sullivan, Pete Garvey, T.J. Plant, Pat Roach, the whole team and Superintendent Warwick's team. This is very, very tedious work in putting this paperwork together to obtain these millions of dollars of funding. So with that, let me just read the predicate here. How do you like that, Fernand? Is that pretty good?
Can I?
Yes.
So just to move this along, so do we have to, we have to take these votes separately, right?
So my suggestion is that the votes, the votes have to be taken separately, but that somebody, some committee member could move the first vote, which is for priority five for the renovation of the roofing system at Samuel Bowles, and then take the vote. So you would not have to read at length each of the votes.
Thank you for that clarification. So let me just.
And the chair could say "and" consistent with the preamble contained in item five.
The preamble, I use predicate. Yeah, I got corrected there. Thank you. Let me just read the preamble quickly, not the predicate. The following statements of interest are brought before the school committee to approve and authorize the superintendent of schools submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the following 2016 statements of interest, which describe and explain deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Mass School Building Authority, having convened in open meeting on January 25, 2017. Prior to the closing date, Springfield School Building Subcommittee of Springfield, in accordance with its charter by laws and ordinances, the school committee hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting these statements of interest forms as the Mass, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees their acceptance. Mr. Rolland Norman has chaired that school committee, School Building Commission for me. So there is a list and Attorney Phelps, you say I can read the first one and then we can go just reading what school it is at this point. Okay, so technically, the first one here is 4E1, vote to approve and authorize superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority statement of interest dated on February 17, 2017. For Samuel Bowles Elementary School located at 24 Bowles Parks, Springfield, Mass, which describes, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which the application may be submitted to the Mass School Building Authority in the future. Priority five, for the renovation and replacement of roofing system of the school building to ensure the health and safety of the schoolchildren and to decrease the energy-related costs associated with the school buildings. Superintendent Warwick? Yeah, recommend approval. We've had Pat Sullivan, Pete Garvey look at these, all of our roofs. All of these roofs are over 20 years, so they qualify to be replaced by this, you know, with 80% reimbursement from the state. So this is a big advantage and I just applaud the mayor and stepping up and bonding for all these improvements because we've had more accelerated, all the roofs and windows and doors are what they call the accelerated repair program. A lot of cities and towns in the Commonwealth haven't applied and we've benefited from that in getting just about all of our roofing system replaced and our windows and doors. So Samuel Bowles is for a new roof, which is needed. I recommend approval. Can I just make a side comment? We put our money where our mouth is. In a sister or brother city or town, Amherst is going for a third vote, a third vote on school, two grammar schools that are falling, dilapidated and falling down and have been voted down twice. So when people want to take shots at the city of Springfield, we put our money where our mouth is and always stand up for our childrens, teachers, administration and our physical plan. And that is an affluent, that is an affluent community, not an urban center. I want to make that analogy and point, when people want to dictate to the city of Springfield what we should do, we're doing the job. So just Attorney Phelps, this will be the initial vote. Do I, at that point in time, just have to list the schools from there, which majority are roofs and, or do I have to read the little synopsis on each?
I think just you would then call for a vote with regards to 4E2, which is for the Milton Bradley School roofing system.
Okay, just, okay. So again, is there any questions or comments? This is again on Bowles School to start.
I would make a motion that we approve 4E2 for the roofing system at Bowles School, adding the preamble to the vote.
Okay, that's 4E, 4E1.
4E1, I'm sorry.
So there's a motion by Mr. Collins is a second. Second, second by Mr. Rolland. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rolland?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve adding the preamble, 4E2 for the roofing system at Milton Bradley.
Yes, any questions or comments? Okay, motion by Mr. Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rolland?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes. Go ahead, Ms. Gresham.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion adding the preamble to the motion that we approve 4E3 for the roofing system for High School of Commerce.
Go Red Raiders, my alma mater. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, the motion by Mr. Collins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rolland. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Rolland?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion adding the preamble to the motion that we approve 4E4 for Summer Avenue School for the replacement of the roofing system.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion by Mr. Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Roll call, vote is required.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rolland? Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion adding the preamble to the motion that we approve 4E5 for the South End Middle School for the installation of new windows and doors.
Second. Motion by Mr., any questions or comments? Hearing none, motion by Mr. Collins, seconded by Mr. Rolland. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rolland? Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion adding the preamble to the motion that we approve 4E6 for the Arthur T. Tomlin School for the installation of windows and doors.
Any questions or comments? Again, a motion's on the floor from Mr. Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
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 Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion, again, adding the preamble to the motion that we approve 4E7 for the installation, the upgrading of a heating system and the automated web-based energy management system at the Herena Community School.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments? Again, on the motion on the floor by Mr. Collins.
Second.
Second, second by Mr. Rolland. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rolland? Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes. Next?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion, again, adding the preamble to 4E8 for the replacement of Homer School.
Barbara, you're happy on that one.
Do you want to make that motion? It's your zone.
Let Barbara make that motion.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion noted by Ms. Gresham, seconded by Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Gresham?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Ms. Rolland?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes. Thank you. Next?
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Murphy would like to make a motion, again, adding the preamble for 4E9 for the replacement of Lincoln School.
So moved. Okay. Thank you, motion, any questions or comments? Motion made by Attorney Chair Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second was by Mr. Collins. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
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 Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes. Thank you very, very much. I'll now move to reports of state. Bless you, salute. Standing committees, student relations, parent concerns.
No reports, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. B, Buildings and Maintenance Committee.
I think we've talked enough about building and maintenance. All the things we voted on, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Salute.
God bless you.
C, Legislative Contracts Committee. Rosa, Ms. Perez is absent, she's under weather this evening. D is Curriculum Programs Committee.
Mrs. Hurst.
And E is, again, away at a family event. E is Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Collins.
We've covered the items on the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. F is Vocational Education.
No report at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Rolland. G is Technology Committee.
Just very briefly, Mayor, I know it's, we didn't have a meeting, but there was a nice article in the paper about the take-home program for the laptops. Paul Foster, obviously, he's done a great job. It's a great initiative for our kids to get seamless transition from school to home on their computers and it's, at this point, is, I know there may be some costs in the future, but there's no cost to the city, so we're going to be working on that over the course of the next year with respect to making sure our kids have computers at home.
Thank you, Vice Chair Murphy. Appreciate that and matter of fact, thank you for your nice op-ed letter pertaining to that situation to the Republican, too. We appreciate that. Any questions or comments on Vice Chair Murphy's report? Okay, hearing none, thank you. H is School Safety Committee.
No reports.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. We'll now move to the report of Superintendent Warwick. Superintendent Warwick, please. Thank you, Mayor. Just was very, very proud of our kids and our staff at Central High School. As you know, we endured a terrible tragedy as a city in the last few weeks, probably one of the worst tragedies I've ever seen the city endure. When I went over to Central High School, I was just so proud of the students and staff, the way they rallied together as a family and the way the city rallied behind them with an outpouring of support and made sure that every student who was having difficulty or every, any staff member who was having difficulty, because they really are a family. We provided support for them and our counseling staff did a great job. Yolanda's, again, sent a team of folks in to help. So did the Behavior Health Network to make it through that. Everyone was getting the kind of support that they needed to get through the tragedy, but I just thought the real family atmosphere and the really strong relationships with our kids that our staff has really kind of shown through in a really difficult situation. And I was proud of the city, I was proud of Central High School, and I, just again, I think to endure something like this and then still move forward as a community. And some of our kids thought so much of Central High School that they actually got buried in their cheerleading outfits. They're so proud of Central High School, so I was really proud of the staff and students and, again, this entire city for the support people showed. You know, if I, if I can, Superintendent, it was a tragic event and many times, unfortunately, we come together during tragedy instead of celebration. And the generosity of the community, generosity of officials, we appreciate that, to help out the families, the tight-knit of the students and staff administration, whether it was on the vigil at night on Union Street, to all the wakes and funerals that we attended and spoke at some, and even the games, the girls' basketball game and the boys' basketball game that I went to, you, you could see that and to Tad, Principal Tolcar's and the family and to all the members of the school committee. It was a tragedy and we're very hopeful that a positive legacy will come, that the kids remember how quickly life can end and change, but a lot of rallying from, from the city. And I just wanted to publicly thank everyone. We had many, many people that stepped up to the plate to help out these families in their time of need and, you know, they look down from heaven now and we're going to, the kids will make you proud. And again, our deepest sympathy, thoughts and prayers of encouragement to the affected family and friends. Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Thank you, Mayor. Few pieces of information in your package. We were given this information this week. Two of our schools from the Baker-Palito administration, there's a press release in there, but two of our schools, one of our schools was a finalist for National Blue Ribbon School and two of our schools, White Street and STEM, received commendation school status, so I'd like to congratulate, again, the staffs and teams at those schools. Those both, by the way, are Level One schools in the city of Springfield now. And, again, the staff, principal leadership and the kids at the school did a great job. There were two articles talking about Springfield's empowerment zone. Charlie Baker in the State of the State talked about the empowerment zone and that, there are articles in there for you. And Alice Peish, head of the Ways and Means and the Education Committee in the House, who's been a real passionate advocate of education, cited our empowerment zones as something hopeful for the future. She's always been very supportive of public education and actually, when we went down and spoke to the Foundation Review Committee, Tim and I and a few others, really still pushing the Foundation Review piece for us, but I thought that was some nice coverage for the city of Springfield. And the last piece, the contracts report is included in your package as well. Any, thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments?
Just a follow-up on that, there was an article in the Mass Association of School Committees Letter today that Representative Peish is filing a bill again this year to fully implement that recommendation.
Yes, I saw that come through today from Mass Association of School Committees. She's been just an tireless supporter of public education and a lot of folks talk about it, but when it comes to actually doing something about it, she's always stepped forward. And for Springfield, that's 25 to 30 million that the state is saying they're underfunding our public schools right now. So it would help cities like Springfield the most because the present formula, now that they're not using the Foundation Review formula to funnel all the money in, has short-changed the urban centers, so she's been a big advocate. And I'd say our biggest fight in the future is for this equitable funding and for them